Welcome to the February 27, 2023, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We have an invocation offered by Commissioner Harris, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Father God, thank you for waking us up today. Thank you for your love and your care. Thank you for everything you have freely given us in this life. I pray that we can keep our eyes on you and live a life that proclaims your excellence. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Myers, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Mr. Wantington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinsen? Mr. Poole? Mr. Murray?
Here.
May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Commissioner Meinsen from this meeting?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second? No objection. Motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Poole from this meeting?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
No objection. That motion will be approved in hearing no objection. Both those commissioners are excused. Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of February 13, 2022? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. White.
I move that we accept the minutes of the February 13 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? No objection. That motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved and those minutes are approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, share with us your name and address and your agenda item comments.
Yes, good evening. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Excuse me. Three items. The first is Item B, which is the submerged land lease for Battery Park. I'd like to know what the total value of that submerged land lease is and how much the city receives back from ODNR on that issue. Item number one, the capital budget for the city for five years. And I haven't looked at the budget yet. I just got the agenda here shortly ago. I'm wondering if, in that capital budget, we could find money to finish the Lyons Park project from 2009, specifically a restroom in the vicinity of the shelter houses. There were a number of events down there last year that I helped out with. A lot of little kids, and whenever they had to go to the restroom, they had to run all the way over by the splash pad to use the restroom. So maybe we can get that done. The other item is Item number three, which is the grinders renewal for rental of the city-owned building at Shoreline Park. This is an additional three-year agreement from 2014 through 2026. And I guess my only comment on that would be it's a great facility. I eat down there once in a while. Great use of the building. But this rental agreement for tonight should kind of put to rest the idea that the buildings in any of our parks are going to be subjected to the parks charter amendment if it passes tomorrow during the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Any additional comments from residents regarding agenda items? We will attempt to answer those questions when those pieces of legislation come before us. Next on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the CDPG action plan. Typically, this hearing would be conducted by our program administrator, Nicole Groey, but we have a pitch hitter tonight, and Helen Gilson.
Yes.
This is a public hearing, so we'll entertain questions from both the public and commission. That's the conclusion of this presentation.
Thank you, Commission President Brady. And again, I am pitch hitting for Nicole Groey. If there are questions, I'm happy to take them down and may not be able to answer them today at the meeting. Just to begin, the Community Development Block Grant Program supports the objectives listed by HUD to benefit low- to moderate-income families, to aid in the prevention of slum or blight, or to meet a community urgent need due to disaster. The city of Sandusky is an entitlement community, which means they receive, or we receive, funding directly from the Department of HUD. With these funds, the city are allowed to carry out activities that meet those objectives that I mentioned earlier. Each year, grantees must submit an update to HUD referred to as the Annual Action Plan. The Annual Action Plan describes the specific plan uses for CDPG program, as well as certain other program requirements. The Annual Action Plan is due annually to HUD no later than 45 days before the beginning of a program year, and I'll get to schedule in a moment. Quickly, I wanted to just highlight 2022 accomplishments in the areas that we do expend dollars: demolition, code enforcement, fair housing, public facilities, food pantry program, which were supported by COVID dollars, which will be expended at the end of this year, program year, as well as public services. The Funding and Its Thresholds. Community Development Block Grant. The 2023 program year is June 30, 2023, through July 1, 2024. The city does anticipate an allocation of approximately $729,701. Am I saying that correctly? Sorry. Under this grant, certain funding thresholds cannot be exceeded. 70% or more must benefit low- to moderate-income households or areas. So in this instance, $510,000 or more must be spent on this category. 20% maximum can be budgeted for program administration, and 15% maximum can be budgeted into public services. The Process. Earlier this month, we released sub-recipient program, public service provider, applications for this program. We had the first CPAC meeting last week, and today we are here with our first public hearing. There will be opportunities to opine on how we will spend these dollars at upcoming meetings or through the public comment process. Applications for sub-recipients will be due March 13, and so on, through the rest of the program. The deadline for submission of the plan is May 17, which adheres to the requirements set by HUD. Onto the budget. For 2023, again, we anticipate about $729,701. Again, 70% or more must be budgeted to benefit low- to moderate-income households. The breakdown, and I apologize, this is hard to see. We can make this available or perhaps put it up on our website so folks can take a look a little bit more closely. For this year, for the program year '23, we're budgeting about $120,000 for program administration and planning. $10,000, which is consistent with last year's budget for fair housing. We have $265,000 budgeted for public facilities, which is a slight decrease but adheres to the requests from the department. For community development, which supports things like pocket parks, curbs, and sidewalks, we've budgeted $40,701. Code enforcement, slight bump from the year prior at $90,000. For public services or those third-party commitments, sub-recipients, we are budgeting $49,000. Youth programming, which is the youth programming that is supported by our rec. department, $60,000. This year, we are not budgeting additional dollars for rehab because we have carryover that will be coming from prior year to support a lead hazard control program and a paint program that we're partnering with the Erie County Health Department. $95,000 we budgeted for acquisition and nuisance abatement, which is formerly known as clearance and demolition. With these dollars, we're looking to potentially do some rehab through receivership program to try to facilitate rehab for the purposes of resale or rental in the community, perhaps through third-party organizations, to avoid demolition. There's been a lot of demolition in the past, and this is one thing that we're hearing from community to try to save homes where possible. So with that, that is the presentation, and I'm happy to accept any questions at this time.
Questions from the public regarding this public hearing? Questions from commission? Comments or questions? Ms. Gilson, I'm pleased to see that two items in there were certainly dramatically increased, and one was, I believe, one was abatement, and the other was youth services. I don't think money can be spent any more wisely. I don't think our CG money can be spent any more wisely than in those two areas. So that serves every corner of our community, so to speak, so I'm pleased to see that. Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. I just had one question. I think I recall last year, we didn't spend all the code enforcement money that was in this budget, the CDPG budget.
So last year's allocation was $70,000, and according to Ms. Groey, we are on track to spend all of that this year. Again, this program year that we're in now goes until July, I'm sorry, June 30. So we are on pace to spend that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman. Want to get a question?
I was here for the meeting, along with you, Mrs. Groey. On the paint program, how's that going to work? Because I had asked at this table in the past, could we get paint to redo houses? And the former city manager said that that would be problematic. If I recall right, Mr. Murray, he used to have, like, high school kids and that, do it or help out. Is there a set amount for that?
For painting activities? We joined, pardon me, through the commission president. We did join our paint program dollars with the lead hazard control program with the Erie County Health Department.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
So if you do know of children that have elevated blood levels, please have them contact Erie County Health Department, and we can get them into that program.
Okay. Because it wasn't clear the other day. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
The program that Mr. Wantington brings to mind was one that we had some years ago where we provided just the paint. So it was similar in a way. It's a cousin to the housing rehab programs that we have, but we just provided the paint where there were volunteers to paint. So it was a good program. I don't remember what caused it to go away, Mr. Wantick. I don't recall it. I don't recall it as you do, but there are few people who recall things as clearly as you do. I will admit that readily.
I was kind of startled when Mr. Wupsher brought up that at our meeting, and it hasn't been that long ago, that it would create a problem, you know, like lawsuits, or so we kind of backed off if they made a mistake or somebody got hurt. That was his concern when I talked to him then and it followed me. But I know we volunteered for years if someone, the high school, St. Mary's Sandusky kids, painted homes in the area, they needed help, elderly people and that. And that's why I just couldn't believe it just went away, like, fell off the...
But, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I don't recall the concerns that were raised. I just, I'm not remembering that right now. I would defer to our law director since he is the one who rightfully protects us from those kinds of liabilities. I don't immediately see, as long as it's handled properly, why that would expose us to a significant liability if we provided the paint to a group of volunteers and had the appropriate agreements in place.
No, I would tend to agree. I think there's a way we can, if there's volunteer forms or other things, we usually have people sign waivers and other things like that, that we can handle anything that would allow us to run a program like that and cover the city from any potential risk that it might incur in running the program.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
I seem to recall there were a couple of times where there was a group from Catholic charities, I think they were the YES program, the Youth Elect Service. They came in and did some volunteer painting. I remember years ago when we tried a painting program where we would give the paint to volunteers or to people that wanted property, to paint their own property. It's difficult to police something like that because you never know, once you give the paint to them, if the job's getting done. And it's labor-intensive, so those kind of things would have to be worked out, I think.
I'm somewhat familiar with the YES program. I have two of my children participated in a very successful program for the Catholic schools, but my recollection is that it had almost nothing to do with lead abatement. It had to do with beautification.
Right.
And helping someone beautify their home or eliminate blight, so to speak.
Right.
But it was not being used to encapsulate lead and reduce lead issues. But we can certainly look at that and pursue that. Additional comments or questions for the public hearing? Not, I will declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Gilson. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff regarding various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection. That motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Commissioners, we have eight items on the consent agenda this evening. Any of you wish to move any consent items to the regular agenda? Mr. Harris, will you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, Budget Appropriation Amendment Number One. Item B, Payment for Submerged Land Lease at Battery Park to ODNR. Item C, Permission to Participate in Internet Sales, calendar year 2023. Item D, Land Bank Purchase and Sale Agreement for 1502 Hayes Avenue. Item E, Big Island Water Works Change Order Number One and Final for Traveling Water Screen with Evacwa. Item F, Permission to Submit EMS Grant Application. Item G, Payment of Annual Subscription to Lexipol for SPD. Item H, Access Easement for Market Warren Street Property.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through H, and declaring that all ordinances and or resolutions is drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take an effect in accordance with section reflected in the ordinance and or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Was a question you asked about the amount of the lease, the submerged land lease that comes back to the city. And I'm going to guess that Ms. Reader is probably the best person to answer that question. I have a very faint recollection. If it's in the city limits, then about half of that comes back to the city?
Ms. Reader.
Through the commission president, Commissioner Brady, and Mr. Schwanger that asked the question. So the submerged land lease is invoiced at $18,976.01, and then, yes, as the local authority, we get 50% of that back annually, once it's paid, from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
50%. Thank you. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. We'll turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, will you present item number one, which is a first reading ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed approving and adopting the 2023 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for the City of Sandusky.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. White.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance passed at first reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
As Mr. Klein points out in his cover communication to the companies of legislation, this took a hiatus from public review for a period of time because of COVID and the uncertainty. Those who are regular watchers of city business will recall that this started back, well, Mr. Klein has the date right here, in 2016. And, you know, that was a profound movement forward in terms of our ability to plan for future events. And it stayed in the background, and staff, kudos to Mr. Klein for pulling this together, but it had a lot of other people, Ms. Reader, Mr. Holliday, I'm sure, contributed a lot, Mr. Snyder, in particular, all of those folks would have contributed a great deal. Mr. Klein may have additional comments beyond that, but it's a lot of work to pull this together, but it's worth it because this aligns our strategic plan with the real dollars that are necessary to do the work and to identify the sources of those funds. Now, the passage of this plan, of course, in no way binds this commission or any commission that follows to any particular item that's included in this plan. All of those will have to be subject to individual pieces of legislation that will come before the commission as long as it's above $10,000. But I just want to express my gratitude to staff for pulling this together because this provides a really great roadmap, and I think it's an advanced city planning function that we're very fortunate to have.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance passes on first reading, and we'll come back and we will deal with it again. Ms. Myers, will you present item number two, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the city's participation in the Water Resource Restoration Sponsorship Program, WRRS-P, authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an Ohio Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Water Resource Restoration Sponsor Program sponsorship agreement with the Village of Indian Hill of Hamilton County, Ohio, for their Sycamore Creek Restoration and Habitat Enhancement Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Klein, I know you're about saving us money, and you're saving us a small percentage here, but a small percentage of a very large figure ends up being a very large figure. Can you share with us so we get in the public record exactly what we're doing here?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So when we reached out to the WPCLF program through Ohio EPA, they had mentioned about a sponsorship program that they also run. What this program does is it will take those loans that are already established, that are already going to happen, and it'll take a little bit of the interest that we pay on our loan off the top and feed it to some other projects, some environmentally friendly projects. In this case, we have, for this piece of legislation, it's the Sycamore Creek Restoration and Habitat Enhancement Project. And then for the next piece of legislation, it'll be the Veterans Legacy Woods Cold Water Stream Restoration for Geoga Park District. The benefit that the city gets out of it is we get up to 0.1% reduction on our loan through the WPCLF program, and that loan right now is somewhere in the $35, $40 million range for those two projects. So this will reduce that loan amount somewhere in the $70,000. Both of these together, it's about $35, $40,000 apiece. So it's not that it's insignificant. $70,000 might seem like a drop in the bucket, but it's definitely a significant amount of money when you're talking about a project this size. So we're doing everything we possibly can, knowing the size of that project, to reduce the loan amount, the interest, and everything as much as we possibly can. And hopefully, in April, we'll get an interest rate. We'll know exactly what our interest rate is, if we got any principal forgiveness and things like that on that loan. So we'll bring that back as soon as we get that information.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. My understanding is that there is no burden in this sponsorship of us to provide administrative capabilities. We're not going to these two areas and making sure they do it right.
Right, through you, Mr. President. No, we do not have to go and manage the project or oversee it. EPA has assured me that they really want these projects like this to be successful, so they do all of the project management. It's more of a formality to get us to sponsor them.
Good money for a small amount of paperwork. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number two, ordinance number two?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the city's participation in the Water Resource Restoration Sponsorship Program, WRRS-P, authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an Ohio Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Water Resource Restoration Sponsor Program sponsorship agreement with the Geoga Lake District of Geoga County, Ohio, for their Veterans Legacy Woods Cold Water Stream Restoration Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how does you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Same scenario, I presume, Mr. Klein? Different location? Ms. Myers, will you poll the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number three, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the installation and maintenance of signage for the U.S. Bike Route signage project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Ms. Myers, will you poll the commission on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number four, please?
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2023 local street resurfacing project, approving the specifications and the engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman. I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Klein, another piece of legislation with your, I believe, with your name or your staff's name behind it. It's always a good time when we are providing dollars for resurfacing. Can you give us some indication of what we're doing here?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. And I would like to point out that the list of streets as part of this project is online, so I do want to make that clear, that if people are interested in exactly which streets will be included here, they can go online on cityofsandusky.com and find that information. One of the things that I also want to point out is last year, we had almost 20 lane miles, and this year, we have just under three. Part of the reason for that is last year, we did take a big chunk of that stimulus[1671.86] Part of the reason for that is last year, we did take a big chunk of that stimulus money, the ARPA dollars, put $2 million towards it. Another big reason is because this year, we also have Perkins Avenue and 52nd, East Monroe, Warren, East Water Street, the signals and safety improvements on Hays, and West Madison, you know, there's some segments for CDBG as well. So we're still doing quite a bit of roads, maybe not the 20 miles of local streets that we did last year, but a lot of these arterial roads to get to these neighborhoods that are also within these neighborhoods will be done as well. Anyway, so this is 27 street segments scattered around the city. We are preparing a map to include. There is one correction that I would like to point out on the list on the agenda here, is that we are removing Dietrich Street and replacing that with Bauer. And the reason behind that is Dietrich is, it abuts the Sandusky Bay pathway, and I'm concerned that the contractor might try to gain access through Dietrich. And I don't want to tear that up next year when we bid out the pathway. In addition to the roads that are included on this, we have added the asphalt for Fire Station 7 totaling around $37,000. That way, we get a good bang for our buck to do that asphalt over at the fire station as well. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. This is just a mill and fill project, so just resurfacing. There's not a lot of curb and drive aprons and things like that. This is our local street resurfacing.
Comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I'm glad to see that we continue to work on the infrastructure within the city. And, you know, you can't discount how much that adds to neighborhood development, so I'm glad to see we continue that, and I hope we continue it in the years to come.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Board of Commissioners of Erie County, Ohio, for costs associated with the 2023 Bard Shaw Road Improvements Project as part of the Erie County project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with IBI Group of Canton, Ohio, for the Butler Street Reconstruction Project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter. And thank you. That's in my neighborhood.
Been a motion, a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, it's a big one. Where you been? Where you been for the last 10 years?
I've been hoping that this project would come to fruition, and it's really nice. One of the things that we are considering with this project, based on the study that was completed by Erie Regional Planning a couple of years ago with some ODOT safety funds, was to look at the need for Butler Street and whether it was needed or not. And that project was somewhat indecisive, but I think what we've heard loud and clear from the residents was that regardless of what that study said, it's needed and we need to keep this road. So the important thing, though, is that we don't need all of that pavement. We don't need the changing lane down the middle, that type of thing. So what we are looking at doing is taking that middle lane. We'll keep the curb line where it is, taking that middle lane and turning it more into a grass filter strip, kind of a rain garden type of a thing, per se, but it's not going to be vegetated as much. And that way, you just have the one-way traffic in each direction without that changeable lane in the middle. What that also does is it allows us to look at how to adjust traffic and not have to spend a day or two trying to accommodate those water-filled Triton barriers on the Mylan Overpass. And we might be able to get one lane going down rather than having two and having that confusing turn up there. So we are looking at that as part of this. Our hope is to get this design completed in 2023, and then possibly bid this project late this year. And then hopefully, we can get it completed before the travel season, before Memorial Day of 2024. That's our goal. It's very aggressive, but we also know there's only a couple residents. There's a couple driveways on the west side, and the only driveways on the east side would be those for hotels. So we do have some flexibility to move quickly through this location.
Excellent, thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Mr. Klein, if I'd memorized the capital plan, I would know the answer to this question, but since I didn't, I can't recall. Would you remind us of the funding source for this? I think we're pretty much on our own on this one, if I recall correctly, but I don't remember.
Well.
And the amount. I think it says a big ticket.
Yes, through the President to Commissioner Murray. This one, the funding source on this is actually going to be through the parking and admissions tax. One of the things that we've discussed with Cedar Point is that money that was supposed to go to them for that first year because they've been really, really pushing to get Butler done as well. And to improve those gateways into Cedar Point, we've asked them if it would be something that they would relinquish, some of the dollars that we were supposed to give them towards the causeway. And we're still working out those details. But it would be through the capital fund that we would be paying for this. That's something that we're still working through with Ms. Reader and Cedar Fair and everybody else, but it is through that program.
And what's the total cost? Rough, I know you don't have the studies back yet, but I mean, ballpark.
To replace all of the pavement in kind, it was over $2 million, but the approach that we're looking at now is just over $1 and 1/4, I believe, that we have budgeted for this project.
Okay, thank you.
I was impressed, Mr. Klein, I was impressed with the group that we're hiring to do this study. I actually spent the time to read through their proposal. Was everyone's proposal that detailed? Because it's like they already got boots on the ground here. They got pictures taken. I could walk through the whole project with them. Pretty impressive.
They're a very good firm. These guys, we got them on board last year to do a conceptual analysis. We were looking at pricing. They were very, very thorough last year, and they were the only one that came in at such a low price. They were more than half the price of everybody else just to do the conceptual. So when we moved on to this phase, it just seemed like a natural marriage to get them back on board and move forward with the detailed design of this. But it depends on the consultants. Some of them are very thorough, some of them will just
Not so much.
throw something at the wall and see what you bite on.
Good, it sounds like we've got a good partner here. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bajali.
I don't think anybody could argue that that road needed to be reconstructed. It's needed it for a long time. And when that study was done, I was really surprised because nobody seemed to object to the old way. I used to call it Back to the Future, where you'd come around and go by the shopping center and down Cleveland Road. That really surprised me. But the thought occurred to me with the roundabout. Will the roundabout be under construction at the same time as this project?
Through the President to Commissioner Bajali, that was something that I probably should have mentioned, but that's one of the big reasons why we're trying to push this through. That project is supposed to start next spring, so we're trying to get this completed before that. If you recall, in the westbound Cleveland Road, there's a barreled-off lane that's been barreled off since I've worked here. And that's a designated turn lane that's never actually been a designated turn lane that I can recall. So the signals at this location and all of the signals that we will be replacing on Cleveland Road are now, are going to be working together. They're going to be timed, and they're going to be making sure that they're operating together and in sync. We're hoping to get this out of the way and get some of that project out of the way, like the lane extensions at Remington and at Sycamore Line and those types of things out of the way before we actually go and tear up the intersection of Cedar Point Drive. But that project's supposed to go late spring of next year, so we'll see how this happens.
See how it works. I do like incorporating the green space and the meadow. I think that gives it some nice ambiance, nice design feature.
Go from roller coaster ride to ambiance. Quite a dance. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Fire Station Number Seven Roof Repair Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, and this is for a full roof replacement, right?
That is what Mr. Klein shared with me this morning.
That's a pretty good price. I thought maybe you had contracted out. My answer to do it or something, to get a price.
Chief, the firemen aren't doing this, are they?
Commissioner Brady to the commission, no, they are not going to do this one, but they have made a couple patches on there already this past year along with maintenance. So unfortunately, I was unable to find any record of when the last time it was done. Captain Jimmy Green, he's been there 30 years, and he can't recall it ever being done. So it's about high time that it gets replaced.
Got our money out of that one, yeah.
And is that going to be a tear-off?
Yes.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that a portion of certain real estate property owned by the city located at southeast corner of East Market Street and Warren Street and identified as parcel number 56-00983 is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to Aaron J. Cornell and Sonny K. Nixon, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Holliday, you pulled some land here, it looks like.
Mr. Chairman, yes, we are in the process of doing that. And I'll let Ms. Gilson speak to this more, but I'll just say that we couldn't be happier with the help that we got from the folks at Russell Real Estate. And I think this is just a real testament to the continued strength of the Sandusky housing market and your efforts and many, many years of worth of work to bring this property to a clean state and now to make it available for future development. So this is really a fantastic situation that we're in. And I'll let Ms. Gilson talk a little bit more about the three sales that are before you this evening.
Ms. Gilson.
Thank you. Through the commission president, again, Ben, oh, you're still here. Our partner with Russell Real Estate, Ben Cooper, is here this evening. We, through the permission given to us by the commission in January, listed these three parcels for sale on February 1st. By February 9th, we had received multiple bids and multiple offers for these three parcels. We assembled, we reviewed those offers and selected these three, which were highest and best, assembled together to then have in return the construction of three single-family homes. So Lot A is being purchased, again, as was explained, by a couple out of Cleveland that will be relocating or building a second home here in Sandusky. And again, we couldn't be happier with the service that was provided to us by Russell Real Estate and hoping to look for other properties in the future to be able to make available for new home construction.
Excellent. Comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number nine, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that a portion of certain real property owned by the city located at the southeast corner of East Market Street and Warren Street and identified as parcel number 56-00983 is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell in designated real estate property to David A. Mack and Christine E. Mack, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, we poll the commission on that motion.[1480.46]
with section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, we poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 10, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that a portion of certain real property owned by the city located at the southeast corner of East Market Street and Warren Street and identified as parcel number 56-00983 is no longer needed for any municipal purpose and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to Daniel G. Singler and Kathleen S. Singler and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 11, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Erie County Board of Health for the reimbursement of costs for the design and revitalization of Churchwell Park as part of the South Side Plan and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I'm happy to see that this is another partnership with the health department. And in this case, it's really going to pay dividends for us for this park. And also the Bard Shaw Road project. I think that was a partnership with the county. I think anytime we can work with the county, it's a good thing.
Undoubtedly. We are certainly benefiting to the tune of more than a quarter million dollars on this parcel and 35,000 or 40,000 on the Bard Shaw Road. So it was a great partnership, certainly. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 12, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed amending ordinance number 21-157 passed on October 25th, 2021 for the purchase of a 2022 Sufen heavy-duty pumper with custom Sufen Monarch chassis through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program from the Sufen Corporation of Dublin, Ohio for the Fire Department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard that ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Chief, what exactly is that item that we're buying for $337? We getting another door handle or windshield wiper or what?
No, this has to do with where they place the OptiCom emitter, which changes the lights in town to green when we go through. There's a number of intersections that have that. This kind of had a disagreement on where we told them to put it and where they actually put it. We had to move it earlier on in the construction process because we had a $28,000 buffer for shelving and they weren't willing to absorb that $337 move. Once we, the buffer for the shelving was supposed to go to an outside company to have the shelving installed and their actual bid for the shelving came in at $20,000 over what we actually put in the budget for the shelving. So we went back to Sufen and they were able to do the shelving for the amount we had allotted. And they actually did absorb a little bit more than what we had allotted, but they weren't willing to absorb this $337. We did lock in a price more than 18 months ago. And they have, I'm almost positive they've probably absorbed quite a few increases from their suppliers on the parts they've been using. So it's for locking in a price for so long and with today's supply chain changes, I think that that's a pretty small increase.
OptiCon emitter.
Yes, it's a flashing light that triggers the light to turn green prior to us.
Could I get one of those for my car? Probably not. Well, it occurs to me that we're spending about $600,000 on this truck, aren't we?
Yes, that's correct. 600.
And we're writing a change order for 337 bucks?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Good. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 13, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a second amendment to the lease agreement with Ron Heil, DBA Great Lakes Grinders for the operation of Shoreline Park concession area and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. I know that Mr. Heil is with us today. Mr. Heil, do you have any comments to add prior to us dealing with this legislation? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just don't want you to have wasted 45 minutes sitting there if you wanted to say something.
You're good.
You're good. Okay. Comments or questions, commissioners?
Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I would ask staff if there's someone who's able to, I see Mr. Worley is not here, but if there's someone who can comment on how it was that this proposed change originated.
Law Director?
Sure. Through you, Commission President. We were approached by the current leaseholder as their lease runs through September 15th of this year and to discuss a normal extension. And with the uncertainty with the charter amendment approaching tomorrow, we wanted to make sure that we, this person knew that they had the ability to operate through the end of this operating season, so through November, and then providing some options so the city can reassess and handle any new way of doing business with park property going forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
If I may then clarify, it was precisely because of the proposed charter amendment that the leaseholder approached the city and asked for this modification and extension.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Heil, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're down there. You are an asset to the community, you're an asset to the downtown, you're an asset to the restaurant family in this town. I hope you're here for another 20, 30 years. Additional comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bray.
Only that they're the best subs in town. I hope I'm not stepping on anybody's toes, but the rest don't make subs like Ron does.
I'll second that.
Kind of messy, but they're great. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 14, please.
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a search services agreement with Slaven Management Consultants of Norcross, Georgia for the assistance in the recruitment and selection of a new city manager and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular general turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. I just sit here reflecting on this agenda and the last agenda that we had and it's obvious that the staff is doing a phenomenal job of keeping the city moving forward and I appreciate them. Also with the capital plan that Mr. Murray said, Mr. Klein spent countless hours putting that capital plan together. So we appreciate all of his hard work, but then you look at the fire station roof getting repaired and streets getting done and Butler Street getting done and who'd have thunk 10 years ago that we'd have lots selling on Market Street for the price that we're getting? So I just, as an old timer, been through it, it's what an awesome agenda. Anyhow, I have three donations, all for the rec department. They would like to thank Brett Sharville for his generous donation of $5,000 for the 2023 continuation of the Midtown Supper Club program. Nation will be used for staffing and supplies. The award-winning program was held on February 21st with 200 attendees. If I could get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, we're approving that motion with our thanks to Mr. Sharville.
Mr. Sandusky Rec would also like to thank Susan Lowell for her $300 sponsorship towards Tai Chi at the Mylander Pavilion. Tai Chi ran Wednesdays in January and February. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks for that donation.
And the last is New Day Rental for their $212.50 donation for tables for the Midtown Supper Club. Get a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion be approved. Hearing no objection, we'll approve that motion for $212.50.
Thank you. The city will be launching a new monthly resident e-newsletter in March, which will help keep our residents more informed about important updates, service issues, major projects, upcoming events, and more. You can sign up for the newsletter at cityofsandusky.com/newsletter and they provide the email address and then they'll get email blasts every month from Tom Horstman, our communication director. And Public Works, the cost received from Moser Construction from remaining design work directly associated with a train derailment totals $97,335. Design should be completed in March with procurement and construction commencing afterwards. Moser will send invoices directly to Norfolk Southern for payment. Public Works and park and rec staff are working with the youth baseball league and Great Lakes construction to ensure that the two ball fields that have been removed as part of the high-rate treatment project at WPC are installed at the former Amvets property that was acquired a couple years ago prior to the start of their season. Other improvements to Amvets and Spraw are still being discussed and prices obtained. There is 500,000, that's a lot, Mr. Klein, set aside for improvements at these parks in the capital plan through 2024. And community development, the city is currently accepting CDBG public service applications for fiscal year '23 for eligible nonprofits. There is a $25,000 cap per agency. There is $49,000 available this year. Applications can be found online at www.cityofsandusky.com/CDBG or by request. And Planning Department, the South Side Plan Draft Plan Showcase will be held at Mill School on Tuesday, March 14th at 6:00 PM. A presentation highlighting the plan priorities and steps for implementation will begin at 6:15. The event is the launch of the public review draft of the South Side Plan. Public review draft will be available for public comment for two weeks following the event. And the draft plan will also be presented to Planning Commission at their regularly scheduled March 22nd meeting. And Recreation would like to ask commission for permission to apply for grant funds through the Whitman Weber Charitable Foundation for two different grants. One grant to not exceed 10,000 to continue Safety Town in collaboration with the city's police and fire department in the summer of 2023. Funds will be used to construct the town's streetscape and pay for materials. And a grant to not exceed $6,000 to provide movies for our Movies by the Bay and a new movies in the Park series in 2023. We'd like a motion to allow Sandusky Rec to apply for both of those grants.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That motion is passed. Our thanks to them for being willing to apply for those grants.
That concludes my report for the evening.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for our city manager?
The only comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
The only comment I'll make, when Mr. Orzak was reading the amount that was required for the ball field and he looked at Mr. Klein and said, 500,000, seems like a lot. Mr. Klein, I don't know if he caught this, he says like, he said like 10 million something. What's the big deal?
Tell them about the high-rate treatment center. Additional questions for the city manager? If not, we'll move to items of old business, commissioners. Any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wantington?
I was gonna get ahold of the law director today, but I ran out of time this afternoon. After the recent train derailments and reading where the East Palestine train traveled along Lake Erie from Toledo to Cleveland and then it went southeast, so it went pretty close proximity to our area, which we have the Sandusky Bay and Lake Erie. I was wondering, is there any way the rail haulers could contact, like safety forces, not the general public, because then you'd have terrorists or whatever, but contact maybe the police or fire. 4 o'clock tomorrow, we'll be traveling through the cities, not only us, but maybe other cities could pick it up along the track. And that's why I was hoping you were still a state rep, Mr. Murray. I don't know if you should, is that something, you know, for hazardous material? Because imagine if that happened in our town.
Mr. Murray?
Well, I'm sure Mr. Klein will share with you and I've read some news accounts of this recently and I also have some experience with this in litigation and attempting to get the railroads to, particularly Norfolk Southern, to be more responsive. The answer is that not only do we not have any authority over the railroad, but the state doesn't have any authority over the railroad. The state legislature and the governor are in the process of discovering just how little authority they have because Congress has what they call preempted the field. They've come in and said, that's it, it's our territory, nobody else can make any laws to deal with this. And to that point, you may recall that for a while, there were some cities that were fining railroads for block crossings. And that litigation ended up in federal court and the court said reluctantly, yeah, I'm sorry, state and local governments, you can't do anything about this. So the attention is on the federal government to be responsive. Certainly, we've seen Senator Brown indicate an interest in making some changes and holding folks more accountable. So I don't think there's anything we can do, but I, other than what we've done already, which is to complain and talk about it tonight, which is a form of complaining, of course, but the railroads operate according to their own set of rules. Until the federal laws change, they're accountable to no one. And right now, frankly, they've got a couple captive agencies that monitor them and there's a revolving door. So you finish your career in the railroad, you go to the federal agency that governs the railroads and then you go back sometimes, but it's just a revolving door. So it's a real problem and it needs real attention by the Congress.
I guess, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wantington?
Follow-up, then, I'm thinking like just not telling them what to do, but if it's